Ethan's worked for us for four years now. On October 20th, he was promoted to the rank of captain with us. So he's your second in command. He'll be taking over quite a bit of duties that were left after Captain Haynes retired a couple of years ago. He's gonna be a great addition and I look forward to a long career with him.
Did it? I thought there was one more. Again?
Uh, we'll do that next meeting.
Gotcha. The next item is the consent agenda. And it's the approval of minutes of the October 22nd meeting. Approval of bills and claims. On licenses and permits, we have a new Class C beer permit with Class B wine permit. Carryout wine includes native wine and Sunday sales. IV Fast and Fresh. Renewal of a Class C liquor license with catering privilege and Sunday sales. IV Market Cafe. Renewal of a Class C beer permit with Class B native wine permit and Sunday sales. Kemos Carroll County Store Number One. Renewal of a Class C beer permit with Class B native wine permit and Sunday sales. Kemos Carroll County Store Two. And a new cigarette permit from IV Incorporated doing businesses IV Fast and Fresh Express. We also have a resolution approving the cat agreement with the enhanced Iowa board for the Carroll Public Library Project. And finally, a resolution covering the street lighting in the 400 and 500 block of South Clark Street. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one. I can't find it. I had it earlier. The water bill, how much amount is that that we, who's in the bill?
Oh, it was the amount that now that we're in the temporary location, we get charged or allocated a portion of the water bill that's being charged to the landlord.
Okay.
Anything else? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Haley and a second by Fleschner. Any other questions? If not, we're going to vote.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
The next item on the agenda is oral requests and communications from the audience. On these that are not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is proclamation and award. Our first item on that is a Small Business Saturday proclamation for November 24th. And the City of Carroll has a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas, the City of Carroll supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And whereas, the people of Carroll are grateful to the small businesses of Carroll, their generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. And whereas, the City Council of Carroll, Iowa celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And now, therefore, I, Eric P. Jensen, Mayor of the City of Carroll, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018 as Small Business Saturday in Carroll, Iowa, and urge all residents of Carroll to join the rest of America and do a portion of their holiday shopping at small, locally-owned businesses. Thank you. And our next item is the Water Fluoridation Quality Award Presentation. And Randy?
Sure, I can start. Amy Hunzaker from New Opportunities is here to present the Water Quality Fluoridation Award to you. Step up front. Terry, you wanna step up front?
Good evening. My name is Amy Hunzaker. I'm the I Smile Oral Health Coordinator at New Opportunities. I'm a public health dental hygienist and I provide oral health services in Carroll County within our schools and community. I would just like to say congratulations. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention has awarded your water system with a Water Fluoridation Quality Award for 2017. This award recognizes water systems that achieve optimal fluoride levels for 12 consecutive months. I know there is a lot of work that happens behind the scenes, lots of measuring, testing, recording, and reporting. The Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recognizes water fluoridation as one of the 10 greatest public health achievements of the 20th century. It continues to be important today preventing approximately 25% of tooth decay in both children and adults. The Iowa Department of Public Health and New Opportunities is proud to present you with this certificate. We greatly appreciate your continued commitment to public health through water fluoridation and your outstanding performance as water work system. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your right here. Thank you, Randy. Good? Future fluoride recipient. Do you want a picture? Sorry. The next item is ordinances. And the first item under ordinances is the proposed Carroll Municipal Golf Course Fees. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone should have a copy of the revenue versus expenditures, profit-loss, and the number of members since 2000. You can see where memberships in 2000 were 799. And this past year, we were 392. We were down 22 from last year. Revenue down and expenditures continue to rise. Insurance costs, personnel costs, equipment-wise, you just see those expenditures increasing. And that far column does show the profit-loss. Some of those years when you have a profit, maybe we didn't get some of the capital items bought that we were hoping to. But overall, we're seeing it in the red a little bit more than what we've had in the past. On the next page, the last fee increase was March of 16. And actually, that year, if you bought your membership, paid for your membership before March 1st, you had last year's rates. So in some instances, people haven't seen a rate since 15. So I believe it's time that we look at raising memberships approximately 5%. I won't read the current rates, but the proposed rates, family 781, adult 509, senior 458, senior couples 703, and the student is 232. And the golfers have an option of doing it per month if they sign up, whatever month they sign up. We'll divide it out over the number of months remaining in the year. But if they're doing 12 months, a family membership would be 6508. And those continue down, as you can see. Green fees, a few years ago, we did separate between weekdays and weekends. We're looking at doing a small increase with the green fees. So I'd ask the mayor and city council consideration approval of the ordinance, establish the new recommended golf rates as of January 1 of 2019. That'll give us time to send out reminders and let people know that these are gonna be the new rates effective January 1. If I have a monthly membership, it automatically renews. We'll send that notice out and that'll give people a chance to cancel if they don't wanna pay the new rates. So on the next page is the ordinance that explains everything that I've kinda gone over. Golf cart rentals, there is a small increase on those two and trail fees, a small increase. So I can answer any questions?
Jack, how do you do the trail fees?
Trail fees?
Yeah, is it, so if I have my own cart, I just drive up, I pay trail fee every time?
You have two choices. You can do per-time or you can buy annual membership.
Okay.
That's what those are.
Oh, I see now.
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Annual cart rental, $480. So if someone wants to, every time they come out, there's a cart, should be available for them. We have 30 carts out there. Brenda does a great job. We have a few more than 30 annual memberships. The first couple of years, we were at 30, but she knows how to do that scheduling. And I think we had 48, did you say? About 48 annual memberships, people doing the $480. So that tells us, that's very popular. You know, for instance, let's say Clay had his own cart. He'd come out and plays year-round. He pays $200 for a trail fee. Or if he didn't have a cart, he could pay 480 and have one available every time he comes out. We do make sure, the first time, if they play in 18 holes, the cart's available. And if they do a second time, we still try to work it so they get that card, but not always guaranteed, I think you guarantee for 18 holes per day, correct? Yeah.
Hey, Jack, did I miss it someplace? Were you, are the rates gonna go into effect January 1st?
Yes.
Or are they gonna do the same thing that we did last time, or if they pay right on March 1st?
Nope.
Okay.
Right in the ordinance, right below that, it says, effective January 1, 2019. Yeah.
And I'd like to have you explain what constitutes a senior?
62 and over.
Actually, 65.
65, I'm sorry. Rec center is 62. We do-
If it's a couple, that's one's over and one's under, do we just go by the older one, assume? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the senior rate, or I'm sorry, the student, what constitutes a student?
Full-time student.
College student. Up in, a college student?
Up to 23. They got similar to the rec center and the golfer in line with that.
Is that the youth you're saying? I don't see student.
Yeah. Student, youth. Student.
The student rate's not on the, actually, it's on the self.
On the ordinance, it says youth.
So I can't be just missing it now.
On the ordinance, it says youth, not student.
Okay. Well, makes-
Would Park and Rec Board review this and okay it?
In the past, they've recommended whatever, did they see a reason for the fee increase? I can't remember. I don't know if they, I know what we did with the rec center, with the golf course. They're generally, they have a feeling that they don't get involved with rates. They'll recommend if we do a fee increase, but they don't wanna recommend a dollar amount or a percentage. So-
They just okay that you do an increase?
Yeah. And again, it's been a few seasons we haven't done that.
Any other questions for Jack?
We would probably tell you, revenue down because of weather a lot of times, rain, crazy weather. That usually indicates where we're at, revenue-wise.
Isn't this one kind of a national trend, though?
Yes.
Attendance going down?
Yeah. I know in the past years, there had been discussions that one golf course in the United States was closing per week, you know? So, yeah, the golf course numbers are down.
Good, Jack. Just so I'm clear on this, 'cause I know I'm gonna get asked a question tomorrow. So if somebody wanted to pay for next year's season tomorrow, would they be paying the increased fee rate or they be paying the current rate?
This rate takes effect January 1, 2019.
Okay, so if they're censored paying for next season, what are they gonna pay?
They would pay today what the rate is today.
They'd pay 744. And then after January 1st.
And so they could come in tomorrow.
Okay. I know I'm gonna get asked that question.
Sure. That's a good question. Yeah. Exactly.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the ordinance to establish the recommended golf courts, golf course rate as of January 1, 2019, with a correction being made that the annual youth be named student. So we're consistent.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Would you like to waive, first, we need to introduce in the three meetings.
No. We have all three.
Would you like to waive for one, two, or three?
Okay. You are right. I think we need to waive in there.
Two? What do you think?
I think we need to, we got time for January 1st. Yeah, we need to at least all.
But we need to send the letters out.
Iowa, are you okay for the next meeting?
I'd get them out, hopefully sooner than later. I mean, if they're dated by the end of November, that's our first goal. So if you wanna wait one meeting-
Is there a concern with not moving forward of all three? I mean, we're increasing people's fees, obviously they're gonna complain, but there's a need for it.
It's so reasonable. After three years, 5%, it's reasonable.
I think the only reason would be to give people more time for reacting to it.
They already know they're gonna buy it now, that's real.
But-
I'll make the motion and move to waive all three greetings.
Second.
Here's the motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead. Nope, sorry.
Well, I'd like to not, excuse me, not waive all of them. So I agree with the price increase, but I'd like to have time for the public, so.
Go ahead with your motion.
Yeah, the motion's on the floor. So, what's that? We'll go ahead and vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
No.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
That passage, right?
Let's go.
Okay. Motion is approved.
And then we need a motion to adopt.
Make the motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Now, we'll go ahead and vote.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
No.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
5-1, motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is resolutions. And we have a new, oh, you wanna go with her?
We have one more on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
This one won't take that long. Sorry. It's all right. We weren't sure what time you were gonna be here, so. Sorry. Next item is New Policy 0316 and its utility count adjustments. And Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our city code states that anytime water goes through our water, the city's water meter, you will be charged for water, sewer, yeah, water and sewer, then we have a couple other fees on your utility bill. We've run across a couple situations that I think would be very helpful if the city staff could have a little bit of guidance on how to deal with it. For instance, there have been cases of water leaks and it is, there are cases that it is determined that the water did not go down into the sewer system, so the city did not have to do anything to treat that water. If a water leak occurred in, with La Croll space, it would've gone directly back into the ground. So we would be looking for a policy which is addressed here that would give the city the ability to, in essence, adjust the portion of the bill that relates just to the sewer, because there was no other city services involved at that point. Then there would be, if there is a case where it is truly identified that there was a billing error in our process, that would give us the ability to adjust for the water portion, even though the water would have gone through the meter. But if we can, if it's proved that we screwed up on our end, we wanna have that ability to make that adjustment, just to be fair to the customer. We think those cases would be very rare, but just to have that ability to do it. And then finally, we have on this policy would address if somebody does get charged a penalty for a late payment or we do not get it and process it in time for our cutoff, that it allows us to offer to the customer, we will waive that penalty if you sign up for what's called automatic clearinghouse or ACH, where we would automatically withhold the funds from your account on the due date. So we wanna have something to write into, to give staff the authority to do some of this stuff without coming to the council every time a situation may occur. So that's the policy that's here before you. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have an idea of something that, you know, if it was severe enough, that you would bring to the council there?
Well, according to the way this is written, we would try to handle it in-house.
Okay. Any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the attached resolution establishing New Policy 0316, Utility Account Adjustments.
Second.
Here's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Now you're up. That's all right. The next item is the 4.4, $4,470,000 General Obligation Capital Loan Note, Series 2018B. And Mike, when you're ready.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, we've been preparing to do a bond sale for both the library, city hall remodel project. That bond is $3.8 million. Additionally, we are including a bond sale for improvements to existing city parks and sidewalks and trail projects. That amount is $675,000, making the total bond sale $4,475,000. We did have the sale on Friday, and with that, I'm gonna turn it right over to you.
Sure, sure. So I usually bring a tabulation of bids, but in this case, there was one bid, so I tried to write a little different information, so we wanna turn to tab one. So in this situation, we got one proposal from five local banks that worked together to provide, kinda to make it happen. I think it's amazing that you have five local banks that wanna support the project. And I think that when we got to work with Jeff, he just made it happen. It was quite frankly, one of the simplest deals to get done. It was very complicated to get to the point, to get it done, but once we talked to Jeff, gave kind of a market rate indicator, he decided that that was a good rate, went forth, and your banks just said, okay. And then we got the numbers, and here we are. So the rate that they all bid was 3.35%. And so I structured it like I would have, as if we went to the market, and then each bank decided what portion of the total amount they wanted. And we decided that, based on the dollar amount, they got a percent of every year, right, based on how the total dollar, percent of the total par amount. So as you can see, Aviva Bank is purchasing 1,385,000. That's roughly 30.95% of each annual payment. Westside Bank is purchasing 895,000 of the total note. Commercial Savings Bank is purchasing 600,000. United Bank of Iowa is purchasing 700,000. Iowa Savings Bank is purchasing 895,000 for the total of the 4,475. All of them agreed to a rate of 3.35%. And Jeff was kind enough to kind of round the troops for us and work with each of the different banks to get their allocations, to make sure everything equaled 100%. If we flip to page two, this is kind of the final numbers that I usually run. And you can kinda see, a couple things I wanted to point out. Because we are limited in the geo-bonds that we can issue for the voter-approved portion for the library city hall project, we, the city's gonna be using cash on hand to pay cost of issuance, to put all of the bond proceeds in a project fund for projects. So since we're working with local banks, there's really only two costs of issuance that are included. It's my fees, financial advisor, and bond counsel fee for their legal opinion and legal services through the process. So that gets kinda allocated proportionally based on each bank, paid for with cash, and now we're moving forward. Couple spots on, you know, how did the local bank rate price compare to a market rate? And there's not anything in here, but, so I just ran some numbers based on Thursday, November 8th. I estimated a market TIC would've been 318. And the all-in TIC for that, including a rating fee, including all the other fees, the underwriters discount, all the other fees that the city would've paid, was an all-in TIC of 335. So I think your local banks performed spectacularly. I think that, you know, there's, you know, because the only difference, I would say, is the municipal bonds pretty price on that sliding scale. So the sliding scale in the early years is equivalent to around $14,000 difference in debt service, so only a little bit extra, because we're using the highest rate in year one all the way through. So $14,000 to me, for the ease of getting this deal done through a complicated issuance process, was definitely well worth it. And 335, you know, in our initial discussions, we weren't sure. We thought that was a pretty aggressive rate to offer to the banks, and we were wondering if they were gonna give us any pushback, but they got it done, with no questions asked. So tremendous support from your banks. And then the other thing I wanted to make sure that you guys, behind tab two, I wanted to share our tax analysis, right? So this is the debt service levy portion of the city's tax rate. And we promised the voters, when they approved this geo-bond, that we would not raise taxes, basically. So Exhibit 1A shows just the library portion of the bond. So if I take out the portion of the bonds related to the FY19 CIP and just do the library portion, you can see that the tax rate is 89 cents and quickly becomes negative, because your local option sales tax that you contribute normally to debt service is more than what the debt service payments are just for the library. So I would say that the city has kept their promise to the voters. But the bonds also did include other CIP projects, so if we can flip the page. The next page shows the two yellow columns off to the right. Those, so the debt service levy tax rate for fiscal 1920, when you did your budget in March, we approved a pre-levy and said that we would spend roughly $934,000 for debt service. And we have structured the bonds to spend every dollar of that. Actually, I think we're a little bit over that by $2,000, so spending about $2,000 in cash are the debt service fund. But still, all-in, your total rate is 125. For next year, I'm projecting for 18. And so I wanted to just point that out, that we're still below the 128 where we were at the time the voters approved, even with the CIP projects added in. And then Exhibit 1C, the last page that I included, you know, we've talked about a lot of different scenarios, a lot of different projects, and so I thought it was important for you to see kinda where we are post-issuance for the other projects that we had talked about. And so this is a perspective, what if, depending on how you guys wanna proceed, the green bonds, the 19A, which is the street maintenance garage and the fire truck, and then the east gym, the rec pool, and the rec addition, that's out in 23. So I know we've talked about a lot of scenarios. That's where I kinda structured everything around, based on where we are at the 2018B bonds. In this case, the maximum tax rate's around 155. So knowing that there's kinda some what-ifs, whether we end up doing the street maintenance garage next year, I think that's still the plan, as far as I know. And then kinda shortening that to leave capacity in later years for the rec center, when the city's ready to bring that before the voters. So any questions for me?
What was the year you were thinking about bringing the rec center?
23. Well, the vote would probably be in 22, 21, 22-ish, probably 22. I think that's the assumption in this scenario. You know, obviously, there's flexibility. You know, I think you kinda have to have an idea before we do the maintenance garage.
That's where we left it, the last year. That's where we had it.
Yes. Yes. So I'm kind of, I'm shortening that maintenance garage, and I'm trying, as you can see, as we talked about, I'm filling that 155 in year one, trying to, we set the tax rate, and that's the tax rate we live in, and then that's when we can get to the rec center, basically. Or I think there was one version that was a 178. I think there were some different rates we talked about. So there's a lot of, I think, things to discuss before we decide for next year. So when we go through budgets, we'll wanna get some input from council, for sure.
I've been playing with, I was just looking at this week, do you have scenario 5 that you would be?
I don't. Actually, I see that, but I might. I brought my big stack, so I may have it in here.
I was thinking we had a construction date of 2021 for the rec center. Actually, that might be this. Clips.
I had a feeling someone's gonna ask this, so I grabbed my bigs. See if this is the right one. February 27th?
Three or four different scenarios.
February 27th? Is that 27th?
Yeah.
That was the one the council, my last...
Oh, yes, sorry. Oh, my data isn't in here at all. That's the one we added after the fact. How about this one, right here?
Mike, your email yesterday said, May 1 of 2021.
I think it was originally 21.
21.
I think that was originally 21. I pushed it back to 23 in here to make the 155 work, but I think that...
I think, you know, when we started looking at, you know, the total dollar amount and how much we could, how much that was going to cost, if we wait until two years, now that I think about it, that could be what it was.
Well, and I think that, I don't, I don't think there was clarity on what the tax rate should be either, and so I felt like, just to be conservative, I pushed it back and stayed with the 155 for now, but I feel like, I don't, I don't remember what...
We'd have to go back and look, because obviously pushing it back two years was going to be the construction cost.
Well, I think the other thing we talked about that's happened since then is the, just the construction of the community. The school's got a project, the city's got a project, the county's going to have a project, and then the rec center, and so that's a lot of yeses for the voters. So I think that plays into it, so I think that, yeah, I, that was just me changing it, that wasn't a, you know, recommendation necessarily, but I was looking at the tax rate, knowing there's a sensitivity around our tax rate now, and that's just when I thought at the 155, that's when, that's as soon as we could go and afford it. Always change the structure of the 19. We can lengthen that out, make capacity for the bond sooner, but the goal was always to save money, shorten as much as we can, and then get there as fast as we can, so that's the approach I took.
We'll have our next strategic meeting in December, and I think we'll all get together again, figure out where we want to put things again, too.
Yeah, absolutely, and again, I'll just adjust accordingly.
And we can work with Suzanne between now and then to develop some scenarios that we can get to look at the planning session.
And I, yeah, because I don't remember getting input on which one was selected, which is why I think I just changed it, because I don't think I remember there being a preference yet. So, that's, that's where, which is my, changing it to make it work. Oh, the other thing that Laura and I were talking about earlier, when we did the pre-levy, right, we were, Laura was curious, she pulled up the pre-levy documents, and the estimated TIC in the pre-levy that I had at that time was a 336, so we came in one basis point lower. This has been a rough year for markets, interest rates are much higher now than they were. You know, there was a little bit of delay in issuing, but luckily, we're in a time right now where the market's kind of held steady, so it worked out.
They're going to go up next month.
They're going to go up probably more than this next month, yes. The tone is at least 50 basis points, half a percent in the next six months, at least, and probably a percent right before the end of next year. So, definitely good to get this one done before. That was a concern, as we've talked about how to get this done, and the best approach, do we, you know, local banks can, generally, most times, local banks give you a higher rate, and in this case, the city was very fortunate that they were willing to take the aggressive rate. And so, yeah, I was very concerned to get it done before the next Fed meeting in December, when rates go up. That's my concern. I was very pleased. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions for Mike?
Sounds like the old big thanks to local banks for working with us alone, making us come together.
Correct, I would agree. With that, I need a resolution to approve and authorize a form of loan agreement and authorize in providing issuance of a $4,475,000 general obligation capital loan note, series 2018B, and levying a tax to pay the note, approval of tax exemptions. Do you need separate for this tax...
No, it's all one.
They can all do B1. And the approval of the tax exemption certificate. Got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Catts?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Thanks again, Suzanne, I appreciate you coming. The next item is the amended fiscal year 2018, 2019 salary resolution for volunteer firefighters, and Laura, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For many years, our volunteer firefighters have been paid $10 an hour, and the volunteer assistant fire chief has been paid $1,300 a year as independent contractors. Well, through some research and learning opportunities, it has come to our attention that we probably should be paying our volunteer firefighters as employees instead of independent contractors. So, what was included with the memo was some information that was obtained from the IRS website entitled Issues for Firefighters, and that addresses this need to be calling them employees instead of independent contractors. As such, the last time their rate had been adjusted was July 1 of 2013, and due to the fact that this has been over five years, and the firefighters are now subject to the same withholding requirements of the other employees with taxes and such, the attached amended salary resolution recommends that we increase the pay to $15 per hour, and then the volunteer assistant fire chief pay would be increased to $1,500 per year, and this would be effective as of January 1.
Excuse me, I wasn't aware that firefighters have paid $10 per day.
At this rate of pay, they probably will not be eligible for IFRS, but they will have Medicare, social, for Medicare and Social Security or FICA withheld. And there are their state and federal taxes withholding, just like an employee would.
So they just get $10.99 passed?
So yes, the association took care of that.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I need a motion to approve the amended fiscal year 2018, 2019 salary resolutions for the volunteer firefighters. Have a motion in a second? If there is any other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Catts?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. You know, they do a lot of work behind, you know, they're always there, and I guess I just didn't have any problem with that at this time, so we're not, we're fortunate to have a, continue to have a volunteer system, so. The next item is reports, and we have a combination sewer cleaner purchase. And Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 30, bids or proposals for the purchase of a combination sewer cleaner were received. We did receive four proposals on new equipment and one on a demonstration unit from two equipment companies. I've listed those on your memorandum, as well as the detail in the summary of bids received. Trans-Io Equipment did submit the lowest bid on a Vector Southland International identified unit at $348,874. That, while that unit rear tires conformed to the manufacturer's requirements, they did not conform to the requirements of the specifications that we had prepared for their bidding. The second low was also submitted by Trans-Io Equipment, Vector O'Halloran International, and that bid did meet all specifications that we had prepared for the purchase. So at this point, unless there are any questions, I'd recommend approval of the purchase of the combination sewer cleaner from Trans-Io Equipment for Vector O'Halloran International at their price of $350,928.
Randy, can you explain the specification for the tire? That's your specification for the tires, correct?
Yes. Yes, we had gone through at great lengths in preparing the entire specification, tires being one part of it. And while Vector, the manufacturer, does permit the tire size that Southland International submitted, that size was smaller than the tire we had specified. And we specified that because we had had previous experience with the tire, and it was good experience, so it led us to decide that we should repeat that experience.
Keep with the same specification tire that's already been working? Thank you.
How long would you expect this piece of equipment to serve for it?
The one we're trading off is 21 years old. I doubt if this will last that long.
But, expected life would probably be half that.
Well, it should be more than half that, yes.
It should be, okay.
Yes. The two, we limited, this was by invitation, this bid was by invitation. Two manufacturers were invited, because we believed that they were the two best in the market for what we thought the city needed. And they were Camel, Super Products, and Vector. And so both of those did bid. There are other sewer cleaners on the market, which we also reviewed, but these two met the specification that we believed would be in the best interest of the city.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to award the purchase of a combination sewer cleaner to Trans-Io Equipment for a Vector O'Halloran International unit at their proposed price of $350,928. We'll have a motion in a second. If there are any other questions, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Catts?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on reports is the requested closure of city offices, December 24, 2018. And Laura, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current policies state that full-time city employees receive a half a day of holiday paid for December 24th, Christmas Eve. This year, Christmas Eve falls on a Monday, and so if the normal schedules followed, it would be that the employees would work, have the weekend off, and then work four hours on Monday, half, half a day Monday, and then Tuesday off for the Christmas holiday. We're anticipating that with that type of a holiday schedule, there would be numerous requests for time off, and staffing might become difficult, or you'd upset morale and tell everybody no. So we're asking council to close city offices, which would include streets and all that stuff, unless there was like a snowstorm, that would be the exception, to allow, and for, and extended or a long weekend, we would require the employees to use leave time, either vacation or comp time if they have that, to pay for, or to cover these hours where the offices would be closed for those four hours. This would not affect the police department, they would still have their normal schedule on that day.
Rec center open till 3:00?
It would only affect the full-time, the office, but the rec center would be open, yes.
Use the bill drop off outside of the old...
Yes.
People are starting to sit in the interwels that day, in case somebody asks questions.
Was this...
No, I mean ultimately, if the council decides they want to do a roll, to be honest, it's probably going to be myself, I'd be, a few other staff members. It'll be a pretty bare skeleton.
Was this generated by the city staff or employees, or just...
This is something that we have done in the past, when this has happened, when the calendar falls such, and I can't remember exactly how that came about then.
When I read this, my only concern was New Year's Eve being also regarded as a holiday by some, I don't know, no effect there.
We are not...
Had that happen in the past?
It has happened like that in the past, and we were open like normal, so, but, yeah, I don't recall that being as big of an issue, or an issue with the police wanting that four hours off.
You don't shut down four hours on New Year's Eve, do you? Yeah, so it's an eight-hour, compared to four.
No, we do.
You don't have to have it.
Yeah, yeah. New Year's Eve is also considered a half-day holiday.
So it's the same scenario.
Right.
Our business closes at noon. Any other questions for Laura? If not, I need a motion to have the city offices closed on the morning of December 24, 2018. A motion in a second. Any other questions, discussion? Not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Catts?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 2018 state annual financial report, and Laura, please.
Attached to your memorandum is our state annual financial report for the year ending June 30, 2018. It is required by the Code of Iowa and is required to be submitted to the auditor's office at the state by December 1 of 2018, or excuse me, December 1 of each year. It also is required that the first page needs to be published. I always like to bring it to council first for your review before the first page would get published. It's a summary, the report summarizes the revenues and expenses, as well as outstanding debt for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2018. I will not go through each item, but if somebody happened to review and had any questions about anything, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions for Laura? If not, I need a motion to authorize publication of the state annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. We have a motion in a second. If there is any other discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Catts?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is the fiscal year 2018 annual urban renewal report, and Laura, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is another report that's required by the state, for, but basically summarizes our urban renewal information, or our TIF districts, is what it does, for what has occurred and where our ending balances are at the end of the fiscal year as of June 30, 2018. So if you turn to the very first page, what this shows is the outstanding TIF that we had at the beginning of the year, a little over $2.5 million. We had, actually, we started the year with a negative cash balance in our TIF funds. We brought in TIF revenue of $837,000, total expenditures of $769,000, for an ending balance of a little over $46,000. Then when you net that against the TIF, where we started at the end of the, at the beginning of the year, we're ending the year of TIF debt of basically $1.7 million. This, our most active TIF area is our downtown area. We do have another area that we call the Ashwood, where we're paying off some debt for the city project that occurred from that a few years ago. This information, the ending TIF balance, will match what's in our financials at the end of the year, it matches the other report, it matches what was in the state annual financial report. This just breaks down and takes just a specific look at the TIF activity. I won't go through each one of them, but it also breaks down and tells what projects are going on or completed, what is the type of debt that you have outstanding in our downtown, is in our, we have a number of internal loans that are outstanding to do the street state projects, base, most of it, but, if anybody has any specific questions.
When was, were they supposed to report some on jobs?
That begins, this fiscal year is the first year that we will, starting our refunding with that project, the actual reporting of the jobs doesn't start until either next year or the following year. There's a little, couple of years in there for them to get up and going.
So I have just, the TIF revenue debt from the year before is zero? How is that zero, then we're actually... This is for the pre, we've already... This is for the pre, we've already gone past it, but I didn't think anything of it, but it says right on there, TIF revenue debt, zero. Is there, there's no debt involved, even though it showed you had a forty-six thousand, or a debt on this document, but not on the prior one?
Okay, I'm not exactly sure where you're.
Well, it would be page, well, the second page of your last report. I have to do the first page of the report itself, the financial report fiscal year ending June thirty.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's a zero?
Yes.
And how does that work?
That is TIF revenue debt that we would have issued in the market or with a bank. This TIF debt that's on here is internal.
Okay.
So it doesn't have the same reporting requirements that it would need to be reflected in the state annual financial report. But it's a debt that we contractually, as the council entered into via resolution or the bioconantrix development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Laura? If not, I need a motion to approve the attached fiscal year two thousand and eighteen annual urban renewal report.
Someone?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Thank you. The next item is the waive the purchase policy number five oh one for the golf course patio cover. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City staff has had suggestions over, for the last several years of a more permanent structure outside on the east side of the golf course clubhouse. When people are sitting out on the picnic tables, there's a huge tree on the southeast corner that does provide a lot of shade. It is real close to the building. We have some concerns with it being that close to the building and what it's doing to some of the sidewalk and areas around there. We'd like to take that tree out. When doing that, that really provides a lot of shade. We need to bring something back in during the months, June, July, August. Those hot months, people like to sit out there after golfing in between nines. So Cass is here, John Clausen's wife, and really came to us asking about a project for FUTS. We thought this one might be a project where we could remember FUTS. We went on and reached out to Jay Schoen Construction. They have volunteered to donate many of the labor hours. What we're paying for is materials for this structure and gave us a price of sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. This is approximately sixteen by thirty-two gable roof cover. It'll look very nice, the posts will be covered in brick, you just won't have wood posts. It's gonna look like a very, very nice structure with that. And the purchasing policy, we're asking to waive that policy because we want to accept Schoen's quote, Jay Schoen's, Jared's quote, without seeking any additional bids, I would think. If we went out and seeked other bids, you know, we might not get the same deal with the labor. So we're very excited about this project. I think overall, it's just gonna be a nice-looking structure out on the building. We'll try to tie in the colors, the roof, the same color for the shingles. So we have a lot of thought with this. And the funding sources again, FUTS, Memorial, they have five thousand dollars. The Met Committee has a committee that raised money back several years ago when they went from the nine to the eighteen holes and just different projects. They helped with the golf course clubhouse project. They still have some funds and verbally have committed to twenty-five hundred dollars. Just talked with Brenda today, we're gonna do some type of golf outing where maybe some of the proceeds would go for this project. So we just don't know that, we're looking early or mid to late April, early May for that, for those funds. And then the last amount would come from the city of Carroll. We had the mower, Greens mower, that we budgeted fifty thousand. The bid came in at thirty-seven, three forty-nine. So we'd like to allocate up to ninety-three hundred. We don't think we'll have to donate that much or put that much towards a project. But it's available there in that line item if council still chooses to allow us to use the money from that project, from that line item. Are there any questions? Cass is here, and Brenda are both here in the audience. If there are any questions?
When's construction thinking about?
It'd be spring at this point. We'd probably take the tree out this winter, when the ground is hard and we get in there with the proper equipment to remove the tree.
What kind of tree?
Big. No, it's not an ash tree. It's not an, we, yeah.
It's just a brooching close to the course.
Well, the roots are like in the foundation, making the foundation come off them. It's a big tree.
It's a big one.
Yeah, I got that from Jack, that it was a big tree. What's that? He has to reach through that gurney.
No, it won't cover the top one, no, it'll be the lower, all the lower. All the lower, yep.
So you'll have a tournament, and then those proceeds will go against?
Yeah.
So we'd be up to ninety-three hundred?
Right.
It's a continuation of donation, you know, that patio was pretty well donated, what, fifteen years ago?
There's been funds.
Yeah.
From other sources for, out the golf course, we've had good success doing different things out there and having contributions.
Sorry about FUTS. Thank you, appreciate what you're trying to do. Thanks, Pat. Any other questions? Jack? If not, I need a motion to waive purchasing policy number five oh one and to allocate up to nine thousand, three hundred dollars from the general fund to help on the patio cover at Carroll Municipal Golf Course.
Someone?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. If there is any other discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Questions approved.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, our last item, I know everybody's been waiting for, is our discussion on the creation of an urban revitalization area. Provide tax abatement, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The council has been considering the creation of urban revitalization area in order to provide a tax abatement and incentive for property improvements in the city of Carroll. Staff have been working on preparing this plan, and we just need a few directional items from the council, a few items. First is kind of tax abatement schedule, a tax exemption schedule for each property classification. And I think specifically also for residential property, does the city want to offer blighted or a non-blighted tax exemption schedule? I'll get into that a little bit more. And then secondly, during the duration, what duration the council want to run or allow the urban revitalization area to run? On the tax exemption schedule, based on the property classification, state law sets out the maximum for each classification. Council has ability to use a lesser abatement, but obviously not a larger than what statute would allow. The following is kind of the, is the four property classification of the schedules you can allow on the maximum side. First, multifamily residential, three or plus living units with seventy-five percent of the space for residential purposes, you can allow ten years at a hundred percent. Commercial and industrial, you can do a ten-year declining percentages for three years at a hundred percent. Residential, that's in a non-blighted designation, five years, a hundred percent, up to the first seventy-five thousand dollars of value added. Residential in a district that is blighted is ten years or a hundred percent. So those are kind of the classifications and then the abatement schedules. Talking with Carroll County assessor, the Coon Rapids, Manning, Waynesboro, Lyddedale, and Greeda all offer tax abatement in Carroll County today. And I did include details on the various schedules that each of those cities have. I would also note that the plans for each of those cities include entirety of each of those cities, with the exception of Greeda and Manning, where there are small portions of the city where the city provided some type of incentive for existing lots. They've excluded those out, but otherwise entirety of each of those cities are included in their urban revitalization district. Additionally, one item to keep in mind, what sparked this was a request from Lincoln Highway Suites for a ten-year, one-hundred-percent tax abatement for the multi-residential tax exemption schedule. They did provide a number of examples of other communities in Iowa and what their exemption schedule is for the multi-residential properties. Another item that I would point out is council really should consider what the exact tax abatement schedule you want to offer for residential properties, and really specifically blighted versus non-blighted properties. The council did provide some guidance to staff to expand the district from what we originally looked at. While there are blighted properties within that expanded district, we do have some concern that the larger area could fail to meet the requirement that a substantial number of the properties are blighted as required by state statute. If the council desires to provide a tax exemption schedule based on the blighted designation, one suggestion would be consider a targeted area for that schedule, and then you could offer a non-blighted schedule for a larger, expanded area. But we don't, we're not comfortable suggesting that entire area should be designated blighted and offer a blighted schedule. Certainly, you can see a few examples in Carroll County where they're offering the non-blighted for their entire city. But you also have an example like Coon Rapids, where they did the blighted designation for their entire city.
Hey, Mike, since you're on the topic of blighted, real quick question. CBD grant grants?
Yep.
Will those, will those still be available to the blighted areas?
So.
If they're in this?
Yeah, I mean, yes, would probably be the bottom line. But their standards are a little bit different than what the urban revitalization would spell out.
My card is a specific property that doesn't need blighted?
It would be an action of the council by. And really, right now, we have Region Twelve, they're going through an updating windshield study that they did back in twenty thirteen. And so it's really, it is a subjective, I mean, code doesn't, it talks about, you know, substantial number of the properties that would basically impact the livability. I mean, it's very subjective language. And so council halves a lot of discretion. What you would hear from our discussion with like Paulers and Cooney, you know, they would provide direction that you need to really be able to look at the property and say, yes, this is blighted, it is gonna have an impact to neighboring properties, it has an impact to the tax base, so yes, it makes sense. And I think we get concerned through the windshield study that was done in twenty thirteen, at least in the expanded area, we're rating some of those properties or a vast majority of them as good. But that really says that's not blighted area or bad. Now, certainly, as you can have a blighted property, you walk a block away, it's closer, you know, it's similar, but it, yeah, it's a little bit better. But then you start going three, four blocks away, you know. As you get away from maybe some of those targeted areas, it gets a little bit, eh, we're.
So is this something where we could potentially get a listing of different properties and say, okay, we need to have you, us classify it to formalize that it's being blighted? And then if that's the case, could a homeowner come in, either say, my area should be blighted or my area should not be blighted? I mean, is there, are there certain things that we get into in that arena?
So Region Twelve is doing, you know, they're mapping it out. They're not gonna provide you, they're gonna provide in a map format, they're not gonna provide you an address of here's every property. Yep.
Be something similar like this?
There was an example included from twenty thirteen in the packet. It'll be very similar to that. I don't think we want to get to the standpoint where we're trying to say, your property is blighted. I know Jeff's blighted, but I don't think you want to do that, because that really does create friction.
I don't want, I just want to make sure that wasn't something that we were gonna, that they kind of.
Mike, do you believe we could accomplish a lot even without the blighted designation?
I believe you can, and I think you see a lot.
Given the status of our housing right now. And that was, I think this is a good way to deal with our current housing stock, which was a big part of the housing study that we addressed. Don't ignore our current housing stock because that's a part of the quality of life and keeping our neighborhoods vibrant. So this, without the blighted, a lot could be accomplished.
And I think to your point, I think you hit it right on the head. You know, what's the purpose of it? I mean, if the purpose is revitalizing housing stock, making improvements, stopping kind of that decline, well, it is, it's doing little additions, little improvements to the existing housing stock. And frankly, seventy-five thousand dollars of new value added to an existing home is a lot of improvements. Where you, when you start doing like a five-year, a hundred percent, well, now you're starting, you're probably gonna take an existing lot and build a new house. Well, that's not necessarily the targeted improvement you want. Now, that's not saying that that vacant lot can't take advantage of building a house and getting the first seventy-five thousand dollars exempt, because they absolutely can. But again, it goes back to what is your targeted purpose?
Right, right.
If you have some houses that aren't.
No, I just think we could accomplish a lot without getting into the weeds with blighted designation. Because it is subjective in my opinion.
I agree.
If there's a house that's just so badly in repair that it needs to come down, that someone purchases it, demolishes the house, puts up a new house, would they still be, if they're fitting inside the category, inside the outline that we have, that would qualify also?
They would qualify, and if we take that non-blighted standard,
Standard.
they would want to get the benefit of the first seventy-five thousand.
Okay, gotcha.
Which is still a pretty substantial benefit.
Correct.
So is this, whatever we, okay, sorry. Anything we would do here, would it affect any other tax entities that overlap county, school district? Is there, there would be no effect to them, or what would?
Well, if you recall from our earlier discussions, what tax abatement or a tax exemption does, if you have a property that's worth fifty thousand dollars and you add fifty thousand dollars of value, well, that fifty thousand of added value would be exempt either as a percentage or the number of years set out in the schedule. So if it's three years, a hundred percent, that new fifty thousand dollar value is exempt from property valuation for that three-year period. And that would affect, obviously, city charities, school, all the taxes.
That's what I did not remember, is making sure that it, the same figure affects all?
Yes, it does.
Different than TIF.
Yes. Yep. And so that fifty thousand of value is just exempt for that period of time. At the, at the end of the schedule or if it's a declining schedule, obviously, that value will come on. And then all the tax entities get to enjoy that increased value at that time.
What if an area is already in a TIF district? And they add up to seventy-five thousand dollars? Are they able to do this?
The answer is yes. Now, there is.
Because they're already getting a tax advantage with TIF.
Well, no, not necessarily, because.
Well, that area.
The area does, and those dollars that are generated in the tax increment financing district go to, in this case, the city of Carroll to do improvements within that district. The danger always is if you have a district and you're relying on the tax generation through TIF to pay off debt, then you are now exempting new value. You may not get the revenues you need to pay off the debt. In this case, I don't think that's an issue, at least with the downtown district. That's the only district that this is impacting or will be part of, because we, we're pretty conservative in when we put that together. conservative in when we put that together. And then, and again, this is new value created, and so, we're basing all of our debt payments on existing values.
Would that be an argument also, Mike, to keeping the, the abatement schedule short so we're not impacting the other entities?
Yep.
Also, you're incentivizing, so you're getting things moving and encouraging people to ramp up these projects, but also the other taxing entities, it's a small window and then, you know, it enhances property values, but then it's done and that increases, not impacting.
I, I agree.
Wouldn't that be an argument for it?
Yep.
So, I'm reading here residential and non-blighted areas, five years, up to seventy-five thousand, a hundred percent, right, for tax abatement?
Yes, that's the math.
Okay. How many, can we offer that for ten years?
So...
We can offer that five-year deal in that ten-year period?
Yes, so there's two different questions. There's two different periods you always have to think about. There is the period of time you're going to allow that tax abatement to one on individual improvements. Then there is the period of time you're going to allow the district to one. So, you can allow, you can, you can allow it to one for two years or one year. You can allow the district to one for ten years. You don't have to put a cap, but then anytime an improvement occurs and that plan is active, then it's, in this case, if you set the max on five years, a hundred percent for the, up to the first seventy-five thousand added value. Now, if you have a ten-year district and you come in at year nine and a half and make that improvement, you still get five years. And you can set, you can set that district time, let's say you pick ten years initially. If the council decides five years from now, we've met our objectives, thing is good, you can discontinue the plan. You can also get out at year ten and say, wait, we haven't met our objectives, we're going to extend it another ten years. So, the council, future councils always have that flexibility.
With the examples you have laid out here for the maximums, Mike, residential in a district that is not designated as blighted, five years, a hundred percent up to seventy-five percent of value added, we can still be declining if we prefer it, right?
So, you could do five years, you could do a hundred percent, eighty, sixty, forty, twenty.
If you look back and then next page, Adele.
Yes, I'll leave that.
I was looking at Adele, did a seven-year for a hundred percent and then slid down after that, kind of give, you know, those individuals a little time to adjust, because all of a sudden, they're going from zero, now they're paying a hundred percent on it.
Correct.
Gives them a little time to adjust.
Well, what happened in Adele is they went through the state legislature for some back bill because the school district did, and that's why they backed off from seven to five, because they were missing out on revenue. So, they worked, yeah, at the school district.
And Adele's a great example where it also caused some issues where they designated the entire town blighted and new constructions occurred. And so, in those areas of new construction, if your house didn't have tax abatement and my neighbor's selling their house and go, oh, by the way, there's six years of tax abatement, my house is worth a heck of a lot less now if you can buy my neighbor's house. So, it became very controversial in Adele. And I think that's one of the things that, as we look at this, we've been looking at targeting kind of that core, not looking to target those areas where new constructions occur. So, I think we've been looking at setting it up differently than in Adele.
So, what happens if something's permanently under construction and we implement this plan during their construction time? Do they qualify for this?
So, yes, but only in part. So, if you've been, if you're under construction, only the new, the construction that starts after you implement is eligible for tax abatement. The other interesting part is, and let's talk about the Lincoln Highway apartments that kind of spurred this discussion, not all improvements create value. So, a roof, siding, windows, they don't necessarily create value. Demolition inside a building doesn't create value. And so, they're doing a lot of improvements kind of anticipation of this possibly being approved. And if it does, they're geared up beginning of the year, they'll probably be moving into those areas that does create value and they can still take advantage of this. So, even with an existing residential home, you can put a new roof on your home, well, that, your property taxes aren't going to go up because you added a new roof. Yes, it costs you money out of your pocket to do that. So, again, it's only the new increased property value that's going to be eligible for abatement.
So, this is something that, does the county go out and physically look at this and then evaluate it so they have somebody in place to do this?
Yes, so it falls under the county assessors.
What if a tornado goes through town? What happens to those homes that were in it? They're, on restructuring their homes, say they have a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home and they build a three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar home, is that seventy-five-thousand dollars for me?
Not necessarily. So, if your taxable value, when you start the project's three-hundred-thousand dollars and you build a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home back on that property, value doesn't change, you build the same exact home, well, you didn't increase your property value. If you would wait a year until your values catch up, then you wouldn't necessarily be able, you may be able to take advantage of that. But the council has to weigh a lot of different things. If you had a major natural disaster like that, these type of policies, you start looking at, try to amend it.
You're going to have the issues of insurance that it would cover a significant amount of that loss, so that doesn't, it's not going to increase value unless you decided to put a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar addition on, because I'm getting a three-hundred-thousand-dollar check, I'm doing better at my job, so I'm going to build a little bigger house.
So, that part would qualify?
If you had, if it was within the district, yes, it would qualify.
Just the hundred-and-fifty-thousand addition, basically, your fifty-thousand.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
It's a good question, Mike, though.
Of course. Keep me on those.
All right, Mike, what would you like from us?
Just a couple other items. Plan duration, we talked a little bit about it, but I need a little bit, in addition to the tax exemption schedule, you know, how long do you want the plan itself to allow? How long do you want to allow incentive? On one final note, I would note, and there was a copy distributed, we did receive an email from county auditor Courtney Earlbeck, copied the email, it was distributed. The email stated that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors asked, I notify the Carroll City Council, that they are not in support of the proposed urban revitalization plan. They are opposed to the size of the area and the effects on future growth evaluation. So, I just pointed out that was distributed to the council. With that, again, I'd ask just for feedback on proposed tax exemption schedule, council would like to see, and then the plan duration, like, so I'm happy to answer any questions now.
I like, I like Carolyn's idea of a short time period. I agree.
For the individual properties. How long for the duration of the...
Multi-residential. That's for discussion.
And one, one item that I would just interject there is I would encourage you to try to mirror whatever you do for residential to do for multi-residential. But if you can do something like five years, a hundred percent, I think, to be fair to all those residential properties, I would try to mirror it. And a lot of the plans I've looked at, that's what you see is there, those are mirrored.
Yeah, it's a good question. I didn't see any real information on how long the plans should be.
Five years. Five to ten years is typically what I've seen.
Is that for individuals or is that for the residential, five years?
This is a maximum, five-year, ten percent for seventy-five thousand.
Well, he's, he's talking something else. He's talking the plan duration.
How long we will have this area.
Right. Coon Rapids, they're indefinite. Litterdale, um...
Where's the middle one, the seven?
Lane's Bureau was ten, was ten years. Reed, I believe, was ten years. Manhandle was ten years.
Ten years is something that was around one in the back of my head. I don't know anything else except that.
Misty said seven, I, I, that's where I was kind of at, somewhere in the middle between five and ten.
And really, remember, it's just, it's a number and you can amend it.
That's a, a district exists for ten, ten years, maybe a five.
I kind of like the idea of the slave's bail thing, things that may make them a little more palatable for those two taxing entities that, you know, do a hundred percent for like three or four years and then scaling down a little bit too, like...
I like declining schedule.
Yeah.
The decline?
Yeah.
Is that more, is that more complex to track versus it is...
It's software. It's easier for me to say, I mean, it's the county assessor, so we'll have, we can
So, we could have this in effect by the first of the year, you're saying?
Um, no, we're probably at this point targeting end of February or early March if we get some good direction today.
Do you want, do you want a definitive year by seven, ten, or is that what you're really looking for?
Well, that would be the plan duration, that's the first question, if we want to take that first.
Yeah. Ten years. Anybody got any thoughts? Something that can be amended, so...
I was thinking seven, that's where I want.
I was thinking lower as well.
That's a long time, but it's...
Yeah. I'd have all five, you're going to get someone to get into it that quick enough.
Three years? No, it may be very...
Yeah, I mean, no amount said this, we found this to be the sweet spot.
How much time will it take you to do five years, each year a hundred percent, and then maybe do five years, three years a hundred percent, fourth year at eighty percent?
And then sixty?
And then sixty percent? Would you be able to show that to us and then have that at the next meeting?
Sounds already got figured out.
Do you know the dollar figure of a hundred percent? Seventy-five thousand?
Seventy-five thousand is the assessed value, right? And so, then you apply the rollback and all that. If I, if I have the numbers in my head correctly, I'm a little sketchy on exactly what the rollback number is. Is it like fifty-six percent right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, I think our current tax rate is twenty-seven dollars per thousand? That's not about right? That's eleven hundred dollars.
So, we're giving, we're not taxing eleven hundred dollars each year for five years if we go a hundred percent?
If somebody adds the full seventy-five thousand. And like we mentioned earlier, that, that's quite a bit. That's quite a bit of added value.
That's a big addition.
Yeah, yeah.
You're looking at the consolidated level. So, fifty percent?
Twenty-six ninety.
I think you have to offer a hundred percent.
Twenty-six ninety.
Because half, half of that is, what'd you say, six-hundred-and-fifty bucks, half of that? No, five-hundred fifty.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think five-hundred fifty dollars would be enough for somebody to buy it if you did it. You've got to go a hundred percent for five years, you get them to buy it on it.
I think, I agree with you.
Depending we match that to multi-residential.
What I would suggest with the multifamily is do five years, a hundred percent with up to seventy-five thousand per unit. I've seen that in a few communities and I, that then gives you to match with the residential.
So, duplexes would be...
Well, but duplexes would be residential anyway, because that's...
Multifamily would be like...
Multi-three plus, okay.
That's a good idea.
And then the last question is commercial industrial, do you want to offer it there and then how much?
You're an industrial guy.
I'm trying to think of the application.
There is a state way program for commercial industrial that it could be eligible for if you allowed for commercial industrial property to be part of the urban revitalization area. It's a sliding scale that goes for five years. It's a state program.
So, what we have to do is just, hey, we offer it and they can just go apply it through the state?
Well, it's local, the abatements are local, but it's a state way program, but if you allow industrial commercial property as part of your urban revitalization, that's the state program. It's kind of standard.
Thanks for staying.
And you find out.
So, what's the sliding scale percentage?
I believe it's, is it fifteen percent? I can't remember now, is it eighty, sixty, forty-five, fifteen? Does that sound right? Eighty, sixty, forty-five, fifteen, I believe. Well, it's a hundred percent year one. Hundred, eighty, sixty, forty-five, fifteen, yeah. And over, urban revitalization can overlap with urban renewal as well. But it gets, like, it gets complicated, but it can overlap.
What about places that have commercial in a home? And one comes to mind exactly, it would be in this district, somebody that runs a pretty substantial business out of their home. Does that end up being called commercial? Is it conflict?
Uh, it depends on what's zoned. It depends on the assessor classifies the property already. So, the class would apply whoever the assessor, I mean, I would assume if it's primarily commercial with residents, I don't know what the assessor would treat that, but I would guess that's commercial property. If it's primarily commercial or if it's primarily residential, that's a business.
If you have a home, then right there is the signs that says, I'm a business here in this home. That's, that's my question.
But if it's zone residential, but if all of them are residential?
Well, Howard's classified by the assessor. You can go to the beacon and look up that promptly and it'll tell you what class it's, it's not you that, but it would, it would, whatever the assessor would classify it as, that's what would apply for your...
I'm not seeing the dollar figure for commercial up to what? We have up to seventy-five thousand on residential, I don't see anything here for commercial.
Well, commercial doesn't have the same cap, so you can do a hundred percent of all the value. I mean, I have to ask the question, I'm not sure you can cap commercial, I don't know if you can...
No, the state program is not capped, it's actually on improvements or in property.
So, if they added two million dollars to their...
It's a hundred percent eighty, sixty percent, forty-five, fifteen.
Why don't we just do what's taken as...
Yeah, we can look that up and do that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think, I think your choices are included or not included, I think.
Yeah.
I think that's your choice.
And with the rollback only ninety percent on commercial, if there is a need, if, you know, it might incentivize...
It could.
Growth or whatever, I don't know, we can...
Burn us out, please.
Yes.
But the number that Laura gave us would be double, because their tax is a hundred percent instead of...
On seventy-five thousand.
That was on seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, but still...
So, we want the same example, so you do seventy-five thousand...
Do twenty-two hundred.
Do seven, eighteen hundred, yeah, eighteen hundred.
I think it was seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Right, it was zero.
Talking big dollar.
Yes. So, the question is, do you think that you'll have commercial investment without it? Do you think you'll have, is that going to spur investment that may not otherwise occur is really the question? Do you think that kind of a program will...
About five years, you, it comes along with tax rules and too, that would probably never come on, because there was no incentive to do it.
Or if you had it in this district today, for example, Hy-Vee and their little project now is a tax exemption, at least on that new value, whatever schedule you set. So, there will be some projects, obviously, that would occur, would occur without these things. So, that's the balance in mind. What are you going to do?
They started that without anything. But to me, this all started to be about housing and fixing homes. It had nothing to do with the residential. I think we're adding a whole new, a whole new consideration that I, I wouldn't be ready to...
If it's simple, just do like what the states are already doing.
You're saying, don't even do commercial? I was thinking that, yes. It's about, this is about housing.
And certainly, you get, if you get that project that we're trying to incentivize on a couple of years, and we need to, we need to do our match to get the state a program, we need to create the district.
We're still on it.
And at that point, you would...
I'm not against doing it, it's just something we added that kind of surprised me this evening. Let's play it, so...
How quickly do we create the district? We wouldn't be starting from scratch, I believe.
Just the public hearing process, noticing requirements, you're probably looking at through this. I mean, you have to, you have to send out a copy of the plan to every property owner. Now, if it's just a couple of parts... Now, if it's just a couple parcels, that's pretty small. You have to send that plan out thirty days in advance of the public hearing, council has to approve it before you send it out. You have to hold a public hearing, you cannot have, if you, you have to, you cannot approve your ordinance for thirty days after the public hearing, in case you get an objection, get an objection, then hold another public hearing, then you can act on it. So, I mean, it is a drawn-out process.
My other comment to the council would be that TIF is a very popular tool for commercial industrial projects versus maybe abatement. So that's something to consider too, is, some commercial industrial properties, TIF rebate agreement, they're going to ask for something if they're doing large expansion, because I don't think people are usually hesitant to ask. So that's the other consideration, is you have TIF as a tool where you may not, for residential, these residential type projects.
That's what we did with kinometrics, that one hundred TIF. We got that done pretty quickly.
And, and one of the things to be careful, bio kinometrics being in a TIF district and with a TIF incentive, you don't want to offer both a tax abatement and a TIF rebate, because they don't play well together. If you do tax abatement, you have no money to rebate back. So, you do want to be careful about bringing those tools together.
Should we just, would you like to just not offer commercial like this?
That was my thought, at this time.
I'd like to know about it.
I'd like to see some numbers.
We're not going to make a decision whether it's there or not, I think just get the information. And then want to go from there.
I don't mind getting information, certainly, so.
Right, no, I get you, I get you, which point is here.
So want more information before I bring it around, or do you want me to bring a draft plan again?
I thought you meant to bring a draft plan on residential ones, back, and information on commercial.
Okay.
That's all we're making.
That was good.
Okay. So, what I have is residential will be a five-year, a hundred percent up to seventy-five thousand value, multifamily residential will be five years, a hundred percent up to seventy-five thousand per unit of added value, and then the plan duration will be five years.
What was it, you know? You said five. That's right.
Okay. So we're in agreement with that, I'll, I'll, we'll start drafting the plan that way, and obviously we'll be brought back for discussion at future meetings here.
Would, would it benefit us to have you bring a draft with the commercial, that commercial industrial that matches the state, whatever you just know for the state, and we don't have to approve it, that just there in the national, but would that be a big ask, or?
You can do that.
Kind of got them both there.
Frankly, it's, it's easier to do it upfront if you want to do it, than it is to come back and then, so, we'll, we'll, we'll do that, and certainly if council decides, we'll run a draft plan, we don't want commercial, it's a couple strikes out of the plan.
Yeah, then we're.
We can make a motion to approve it without the commercial.
May I ask Suzanne a question?
Oh, yeah.
Suzanne, you brought in, I'm sorry.
If she doesn't mind.
You're on the clock. You said TIF is a powerful tool for commercial, if, if we do not, you know, go with the urban revitalization, just stick with TIF, would you say, between the two, which gives us more flexibility with the individual commercial property owners? Would you say TIF would give us more flexibility to kind of customize what we do?
So for large-scale projects, abatement is probably more powerful, but that's a different, like, like the Apple example in Waukegan, that's like a twenty-year abatement, seventy percent, like, that's a special, one-time, off to the side, but that's under urban revitalization. TIF rebate, that's probably much easier procedurally, that's going to give the school some value, it's going to go to your debt service levies, it's going to go to the school for the protected levies, it's going to go to the county's debt service.
Right.
So there is that portion of it, they don't get a hundred percent back, so TIF is a little bit less, but it's easier, it's easier to understand, and I think that, for me, that's just what I found prominent TIF is for.
Sure.
It's for commercial industrial properties.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so, so the abatement, yeah, and that's at assessed level, so it's just, nobody gets value. So you're just rolling it out slower, and I, and I think that, if we're talking about, it depends on the kinds of projects you anticipate too. So with some of your larger employers, if you, if there's expansions and different things, like what you can imagine to likely happen here, I think TIF is a sufficient tool on me, but.
Thank you very much.
Abatement's a little more painful taxes.
Well, nobody, yeah, abatement is zeros for everybody other than what's rolling on, and rebate, you still, everybody gets it for debt service, and the school gets it for the pep and.
Still collecting something, yeah.
Yeah, which I think makes them more supportive of a planned publicity.
Correct.
Just because they get the, especially for commercial industrial, that does have the extra zeros. I think that that's just why TIF is, I would say, and I would say that TIF is more common for commercial industrial, don't see it as much. And all the TIF cash flows that we do, I see there's maybe a handful that have the revitalization for commercial industrial properties, mostly it's residential. So, I think so.